Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Leamington Select Board Meeting for August 1st, 2024. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM, and we will begin with Pledge of Allegiance. August 8th, excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I knew it was the 8th, and I still said the 1st. Approval of the meeting minutes for August 1st, 2024.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the minutes?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of the warrants for week number 32. Payroll warrant number 74 for $35,110.23, and the appropriations warrant number 75 in the amount of $74,053.85. Totals for warrants 74 and 75, $109,164.8. Some recurring bills, Bureau Motor Vehicles, $5,779.50. Central Main Power, $573.83. Charter Communications, $481.60. Consolidated Communications, $43.16. County of York Public Safety Subscription, $565.85. Craig Garl-.
Garlarno.
Garlarno, thank you. I should know his name by now. $201 code mileage. David Lonsby Animal Control Mileage, $213.06. Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, $13,105.66. EcoMaine Trash and Recycling, $15,977.3. FirstNet AT&amp;T, $490.69. Medical Reimbursement Services, $1,343.22. Melon &amp; Sun Curbside Pickup Service, $25,000. North Coast Services Electronics Recycling, $228.90. Presto Fixo Cleaning Library, Old Town Hall and Municipal Complex, $575. Time Warner Phones, $806.97. Town of Standish Intercept, $300. Treasury of the State of Maine Dog Licenses, $957.50. And uniform, first for uniforms, $189.85. I await a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the warrants 74 and 75 as read.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. On to the purchase order requests. Jason.
Parks and Rec, request to pay WB Mason for paper products for Moy Model, $125.95.97. Request to pay sleepers for play sand and plastic of Paris, plaster of Paris, $34.57. A request to pay Amazon for camp supplies, $274.26. A request to pay Industrial Chem Labs for Vegetation Killer, $232.25.
I don't make a motion to approve.
No, we got, next page.
Nope, that's fire. Let's fire an EMS.
Oh, my, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec purchase order request.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
Okay, fire an EMS. A request to pay Car Quest for a blowgun and water separator, $76.18. A request to pay Bound Tree for EMS Supplies, $12.54. A request to pay Door Services, Inc. for eyes for doors and labor, $2,038.76. A request to pay Freightliner of Maine for DEF exhaust fluid, $74.75. A request to pay NAPA for a filter, $81.30. A request to pay NAPA for Engine 1 and Engine 7 repairs, $488.94. A request to pay NAPA for service and drivetrain repair, $405.19. And the request to pay LP Murray &amp; Sons for reclaim asphalt for Coventry Station, $1,080.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire and EMS purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
Municipal Complex, a request to pay Main Town and City Clerk Association, $120. A request to pay WB Mason for a case of Seafold Towels, $47.29. And a request to pay Amazon for eight Wi-Fi routers, $323.92.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal complex purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
Code Enforcement, a request to pay the State of Maine for plumbing fees, $957.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the code enforcement purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
Transfer Station, a request to pay Lowe's for railing for attendance booth, $154.37.
I will make a motion to approve the transfer station purchase order request.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
Public Works, a request to pay White and Brad Street for a cross member, $375. A request to pay White Sign for two signs in two brackets, $90.24. A request to pay Kimball Midwest for hardware for fleet repairs, $478.67. A request to pay Freightliner of Maine for five gallons of exhaust fluid, $74.75. A request to pay Amazon for work boots, $164.99. A request to pay NAPA Auto Parts for Seals, Schrader, and SCH Cores, $173.84. And a request to pay Industrial Chem Labs for Vegetation Killer, $232.25.
I will make a motion to approve the Public Works purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor.
I take it that Vegetation Killer may have been shared by the two departments?
They each bought one.
They each bought, okay, thank you.
Each department bought Vegetation Killer from.
Yeah, the same, yeah.
Yeah, they definitely, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Nikki.
All right, Select Board Activities. A little while ago, I think it was about a month ago, it was, no, it was, it was June 21st, 22nd. We had a fatal accident over at the intersection of 11 and 117. Today, the Department of Transportation came in. They showed us the metrics that they use. For this particular intersection, the crash rate and the damages, the injuries that are sustained during these crashes, they're all above the state's standards. So with that said, they are interested in turning the intersection of 11 and 117 into an always stop. In order to move forward with this, they only need a letter of support from the Select Board of Leamington. That letter has been drafted, but we are going to wait to sign that and send that to the Department of Transportation to give the residents some time to comment and come in for discussion. If you'd like to comment on this particular issue, you can either call the Town Hall, you can email the Select Board Office, or you can come into our normal office hours on Thursday from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. The letter reads as such. "To concern, to all concerned parties, let this letter serve as notice from the Leamington Main Select Board that out of an abundance of caution and concern, the Maine Department of Transportation has full support from the Select Board to transform the intersection of Route 11 and Route 117 into an always stop." We will be, we will leave the next week for folks to comment on this particular issue, and then we will move forward depending on what the folks say.
Yeah, they, they did come in, they gave us four different options that they look at in sections like this. They could have put an overhead beacon in, just a blinking light, which doesn't appear to alleviate anything in their past history of paying attention and watching this. It doesn't change the accident rate hardly at all.
Like 5% you said.
Yes, so, and they could have put a full-blown traffic signal there, or a roundabout. The roundabout wasn't going to work. And so they did request this always stop. It does seem to be the most logical resolution to this intersection. We know it'll take time to get used to it when it happens. It's not, they don't think that it will happen much before October or November, once we give them consent, but again.
He did say he bumped it. The Department of Transportation came to us about this, and Dennis was pretty adamant to stay. This has been bumped to the front of the line, per se, because of the history of this intersection. So it's not that the, this is just a quick, you know, thought process. The DOT has been looking at this intersection, I believe, for the last 10 years.
Yeah, they had a lot of data on all the crashes and everything going back.
And we have that in office.
The vitality did push it.
Yeah.
A little fast.
Absolutely, so.
They have rectified other towns' intersections that were dangerous. So they came to us and asked about this. They had a rare, you know, really good.
Presentation.
Presentation, and we have the pictures from that, right?
Yep, we have the packet too, yeah.
So the plans, everything, if somebody, you know, if they're interested in looking at it, it's here to look at.
So please reach out to the Select Board if you have any questions or concerns regarding such. Southern Maine Planning and Community Development came in today. A particular individual, James Rather, I've met with him before. He is trying to help the town look for some funding opportunities for improving the town and maybe improving the equipment that we have. He also did mention that the Southern Maine Planning and Community Development Commission also has small business grants for folks that have under five employees and live in York County. Those grants are, can provide about, I think the maximum is $10,000 to those businesses to help with costs of new equipment or even to provide bonuses to employees. If you do have a business and have under five employees and live in York County, or are, I guess are located centrally in York County, reach out to them. You can find the links at www.smpdc.org.
And it's called the Micro Enterprise Grant.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jason. We met with some residents earlier today with tax questions, and at least I think there was one or two that came in with property disputes. Also, the Planning Board has noticed that the Select Board during our on-air meetings are giving updates on the different departments, and they have notified us that they will be providing updates of their activities in the next following weeks. I'm not sure exactly when they'll have the first one for us, but you can expect to hear us reading off their activities in the near future. We also have reached out to the different heads of the departments regarding next year's budget. We've asked that they provide a preliminary rough draft of their budget proposals for us to look at. We're not looking for anything concrete for them right now, just something so that we can, you know, take a look at it and possibly look back at the years prior and see what we might be able to do moving forward so that we can provide the best service to the town residents while also keeping the costs down. Anything else from Select Board Weekly Activities before we go into Department Weekly Updates?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
All right. Tammy, do you want to start us off with the department updates?
Sure. CEO reports, three different permits this past week, weekending 7/31. Two weeks ago, actually. The fees from those permits were $2,248.80, with a year-to-date total permits issued, 267. With fees from those 267 permits, $1,1,832.61. That is, let me see. He's been talking about an issue with the trio balance and a spreadsheet balance, and that is being fixed. The total balance reflects the correction here. We will not be processing electrical permits or collecting fees for them until further notice as we do not have an electrical inspector to carry out inspections. If and when we have a new inspector, permits and fees for that category will resume. And that is an ongoing, we've been asking, we've had people come in, talking about it, but we have yet to find an electrical inspector, so still looking for that. Leamington Parks and Rec, the weekly programs. Summer Camp, week four. Last week, the younger campers went to Smiling Hill Farm on Thursday, and the older campers went bowling at Bowlarama in Sanford. We had another great week. Summer Camp Five, this week has been good so far, was our greatest amount of attendance so far this summer. 94 campers this week, and tomorrow, weather depending, they're heading to Splashtown for the day. Next week is the last week of camp. Yikes.
Nice.
Fall soccer registration is open. They're looking for volunteers to coach, as well as sponsors for teams. So please reach out to Madison if you're interested in sponsoring a team. Before an aftercare registration is open for the upcoming school year, please reach out to Madison for more information. They have 23 children registered so far. On that Winter Kids Grant that we talked about a few weeks ago, we did not win the grant, but we thank everyone for voting for them. We came in eighth place this year with 347 votes. He attached a picture of the voting results. I printed that, but I didn't bring it. The winning one was like 704 votes, so it was like twice as many votes for the winning results. And I apologize, I don't think we plug that often enough for people to go in and actually vote for that. I know we talked about it the first week, probably should have been remembering to just keep that momentum going. So I'll make an, I'll make a.
Always next year.
Yeah, an apology to the Leamington Parks and Rec for that. The Leamington Wheelers ATV Club put on a great event this past weekend on Sunday, and he'd like to thank them for offering something like this to the whole community and acknowledge the hard work it takes to pull events like this off. Great job to Mike Marsh and the rest of the club for putting it all together. Thank you to Warden Thistlewood for making the dunk tank an especially fun place to be. Everybody lined up to make sure they dunked him. And it was great food from both Naturally Jammin' and Licensed to Grill as well. It was a really, it was a nicely attended function, so yeah, it was a good time.
Fire an EMS?
Sure. Let me see, weekending August 3rd. Number of calls serviced that, this week, 21. Month-to-date, 12. Current, there was three fire calls and 18 EMS calls. Year-to-date's, 458. Last Sunday, they had an eight-hour period where there was only one person on the shift, but Emo, Chief Brayley, covered it from home. Trainings, there was no trainings this week, but Thursday, they began taking equipment off of the old Engine 6 and started putting it on the new truck. Two members attended their second day of EVOC class. They are now, they now meet the state standards and can train to drive all the department apparatus. Congratulations to them. Let me see here, Vehicles, the 1993 was de, the Vehicles, 1993 was decommissioned on July 31st. Department of Public Works changed a rear tire on A1, and they got a new state inspection on the 2nd, so that's back in service. Let me see here, special notes, they ended this July, 10 calls ahead of last July, and currently six calls ahead of last August month-to-date, and 24 calls ahead of last year's year-to-date. The last few weeks have been busier than usual for the department. They've had a phenomenal turnout for each call, thanks to the members and their dedication to the public safety of the town, so, yes.
Thank you. Another thing for fire and EMS, Chief Brayley will be joining us on air August 22nd just to give us an update in person on things in fire and EMS. So if the public does have any questions that they might have for the chief, August 22nd is the time to ask him. Update from the Public Works Department. They're reaching the end of Hardscrabble Road with all the work they've done over there. They're looking into heavy trucks running through Whaleback and Handsome School Road. The police say that they can't enforce a "no-through-truck" sign as they are a town ordinance, and they are state police. But the Public Works Director has called on residents of the roads to try and find out if it's the same company so that we can call to have them slow down that traffic. Crews who have been working along July Street, Milton, Beaverberry Trail to try and keep the trees cut back now that the temperatures have come down and it's easier for the crews to work out there. Shaving Hill has culverts inspected and pavement cut to prepare for culverts to be replaced. They had a small washout along Beaverberry and taken care of, and will be grading dirt roads again in the middle of August. They will notify us when they start the culvert work on Shaving Hill so that the residents know what to expect. They're going to replace four cross culverts, three are 15 by 30 inches, or 15 inch by 30 feet long. One is 30 inches by 30 feet long. Other culverts marked will be cleaned and poison ivy removed. And they still have a few areas where items are being tossed along the roadways, so he's also contacted the state and local police departments where we look through the items of, or the bags to find where some of the items are coming from. Hopefully, we can put a stop to that trash being thrown out on the roads. It doesn't help anybody in the town, and it might actually make it more expensive for the town to operate.
And that is it for the weekly updates. Tammy, would you like to run us through the informational bulletin?
Sure. Select Board Office Hours are Thursday, 2 to 8. The on-air meeting time is Thursdays at 7:00. Transfer Station Hours are Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 4:00, and Wednesday noon to 4:00. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle windshield for the disposal of all items. Transfer Station stickers are available at the Town Office for $20. No sticker is required to use the swap shop. The transfer station does not accept brush or yard clippings. General Assistance Office applications are available anytime from the Town Clerk Office during their normal business hours. Applications must be filled out, and accompanied with supporting documentation must be signed. Planning Board meets at the Municipal Complex the 1st and 3rd Monday evenings at 7:00. Their next meeting is August 19th, and they will be discussing the Saco River Wildlife Refuge, possibly moving from their current location to another one in Leamington. Parks and Rec Cards and Coffee is held at the Old Town Hall Building every Wednesday from 9:30 to 11:30. Come and meet some new folks, play some games. It's still nice out. So I'm sure that once the weather turns a little bit, he'll be getting a lot more people in there, but it's always a great turnout and a good time.
Thank you, Tammy. Oh, there was, what else was I, oh, the Financial Advisory Committee. They're going to be starting up their meetings here in two weeks, two weeks now.
Two now.
Yep, yep, so they'll be having their meetings right after the Select Board meeting. What is this? Right, we have had some issues with folks disposing of, of, items from a, from a commercial business. The dump is for residents, not for commercial businesses. If you are a commercial business, you will be turned away from the transfer station. You are to get yourself a dumpster. Yeah, all right, we would open up the floor to the public, but we're not seeing any public, so. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. We adjourn at 7:25. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. We look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. We look forward to seeing you next week.